First question for the Board of Education candidates are what motivates you to want to become a board member? And what particular skills or experiences will you bring to the table? Please be specific.
I would like to start by saying that I have always had an interest in running for the Board of Education. I do believe in public service with my career. I have had a lot of opportunities to participate in things in another county where I work. However, I haven't had the opportunity in Bergen County, which is what I'm looking to do because it is my community, my children to attend school here. And I do believe that my knowledge and talent can be helpful in this community. I think that I bring a lot of experience and skills to the table. I understand education. I work in education. I've been a public school educator for over eighteen years. I hold many licenses in education, elementary K-8, middle school math, principal license, as well as a school administrator license. I understand the workings of a school inside and out, and I also understand the community's role in an educational setting. I used to work in a school that was a full-service community school where the community was the foundation of every decision that we made. And I think that it's important in a community that you live in to listen to what the people have to say and bring that back to the board to say, this is what the community's saying, and maybe we can make changes. I think there might sometimes be, I don't know how to say it, but there might be a way that everybody thinks, well, we're doing everything great and everything is wonderful. And why do we need to change it? Because this is the way we've always done it. And I think just because we've always done it a certain way doesn't mean we always have to do it that way. I think there's always room to change and grow. My children are going to be here for a long time, and I want them to have the best possible educational experience they can, as well as the community members. Thank you.
Kara? Do you want to answer the same question, or do you want me to repeat it?
No. Last year, when I ran for Board of Ed, you know, you don't really know what you're getting into until you're on the Board of Ed. But I was concerned about the direction of schools, and more than that, just the communication with the schools and the administrators. And from the moment I voted on the Board of Ed, my biggest passion has been, and anybody who's not, they can tell you, is that you have to meet the parents where they are. And I do feel it is the job of the Board of Ed and the district as a whole to communicate as effectively as they can with the parents and be as transparent as possible. And I've learned over the past year that one of my greatest strengths is because I've spent so much time volunteering and I have three kids and I've been all over, every field and play and every school show, that I am a visible member of the community. And because of that, I'm able to bring a lot of feedback from parents for the things they're concerned about, as well as the things that they feel we're doing well. And I bring that to every meeting and try to express that. Where we feel our children are at and what we think our children need from this district is my priority at all times, and that's why I want to continue to serve on the Board of Ed.
Thank you. We'll go to the town council. Steve, did you answer this question?
Okay.
Same sort of topic. What motivates you to want to become a town council member? And what particular skills or experiences will you bring to the table? Please be specific.
My motivation is rooted in my desire to give back to this community in which I grew up and have provided so much for me. I am motivated by my children, teaching them what it means to be a public servant, to give back, and how hard and important it is to provide for your community. This community, it goes back years. My uncle was a fire chief in Hasbrook Heights. My father was president of Little League. So I saw that growing up. I saw the volunteering to provide services, to provide, you know, excuse me, and just get involved, to get involved, to, like you said, things are going the way they are, and that's fine, but it's, change is good. Change is good. My particular skills, I'm organized, I'm personable, and I listen. I think that's the most important thing a public servant can do, is listen.
Thank you.
Helen. Thank you. I want to be part of the process that most impacts my life and the daily life of everyone in our town. Most significantly, I want for us to have a government that operates in the open, so we know why issues are addressed by the council, why issues are not addressed by the council, and why others are yet never even touched, not discussed. I want to know what happens with our tax dollars. We pay a lot of money in taxes. We have a very nice town, but there needs to be more accountability, more transparency for what happens with that money. Most of all, I want our residents to feel that they are part of the governing of their community. This is not just about people making decisions and, well, nobody really knows what's going on, we don't have to really tell them. No, we want to know. And I think all of you are here because you do want to know. And local government is about the people. It is about the people who live in the town and the people who contribute. They should be allowed to contribute, and I want to make sure that happens. Further, as a lawyer and a practiced family law, so much of my time is spent collecting information and helping clients resolve their differences. I've learned the value and the real necessity for everyone starting from the same place, having good information that they can rely on, and then from there, having an open dialogue about what are we going to do? How do we resolve it? How do we fix it? Or maybe we can't fix it, but recognize that and have them move forward. So if I'm elected to council, I want to make sure that we can bring those sorts of qualities to the council discussion. Further, I've run my own business for 25 years, so I'm aware of the need to analyze the sources of income, look at expenses, and figure out what can we do to make this budget work and where can we cut. Thank you.
Thank you. So go back to the Board of Ed. Kara, this question, we'll start with you. What do you think is the biggest challenge facing our public schools right now, and what is your plan to address it?
The biggest challenge, I mean, the biggest challenge in Hasbrook Heights is always in first, the budget. We just don't have the budget of other school districts, and it continues, you know, that will always be a challenge in that we have to be extremely prudent about the way we're spending our money, and we really have to watch our budget. These, I mean, kind of hand in hand is spacing. How are we using the facilities? Are we maximizing them? Do we have a long-term plan for the district? To me, I think those are the two biggest challenges currently facing the district.
Thank you. Lauren, you want me to repeat that?
No.
Thank you. I think one of the biggest problems that our district faces is the rigor of instruction. And what I mean by rigor, and if you're not an educator, it means the quality of what our children are expected to do and what they're expected, the work they're expected to generate. Gone are the days of copying spelling words and writing definitions out of a book. We're expecting our children to be 21st century learners in a world where they need to be ready, and writing a definition out of a book is not going to teach them to do that. I think that we need training, and I think teachers need training. I don't blame the teachers at all. I think we purchase programs, and then we turnkey, where we pay for one person to get trained, and then they have to train everybody else. And I think the teachers deserve professional development and quality of professional development, where we train them, and we train them again, and when we're done training, then we train them the day after that. I think teachers are lifelong learners too, and they need that opportunity to learn how to implement programs with fidelity. I also think that technology is a huge hurdle for us. I think we purchased it, and we have it, but now we have it, and what do we do with it? Because if I'm giving a student a laptop and saying, copy your spelling words, that's not using technology when we have the internet and we can do research and we can really think critically and creatively. And I think we have to change the way we look at education, because teaching and learning shouldn't look like it looked when I was 10 years old. It should be different and dynamic and exciting for kids and not sitting in rows. And I think that we can address that by giving the teachers the tools that they need, because I don't think they have the tools that they need. And that's something that I think is really important.
Thank you. Helen, for the town council. What do you think is the biggest issue facing our town?
I think that for Hasbrook Heights, we need our meetings to be informative. We need to provide a forum for the residents to talk, to learn what's going on in the town, and for the council to take seriously the issues that the residents bring to the council. In addition to that, I think a real personal safety issue is brewing and needs to be addressed, and that is pedestrian safety on Terrace Avenue. There aren't enough traffic lights. We've heard over the years that it's too expensive. It's a county road. The council needs to address this issue with the county form of government and stay on them until we have a solution to that problem. Children crossing Terrace Avenue, adults crossing Terrace Avenue, we are going to see a terrible tragedy. I don't want it to happen, but I also want to prevent it from happening. So I think that's something that we need to address.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I echo Helen's statements, but I have a few of my own. Transparency, transparency is very, very important, and something that's lacking a lot, in my opinion, with the current makeup of the town council. I mean, there are a lot of issues where there are members of the council don't have information leading up to the meeting. They're given it 10 minutes before and asked to take steps to vote on it. That's not fair. That's not honest. That's not open. I'd like to see an open dialogue between the community and the council members. Often, people go to council meetings and they don't know what is going to happen. The agenda is not released ahead of time. Some very important people sometimes don't know what's going to happen at the meeting before it happens. So that is very, very important. The transparency, the open dialogue, communicating with the residents to get what they want done. You see on the agenda that they're going to talk about Burton Avenue. Great, I live on Burton Avenue. I want to go and figure out what's happening, why it's happening, and what I can express to fix it.
Thank you. The Board of Ed candidates, Lauren. How would you ensure inequitable education is provided for students in our district, given the growing enrollments, children with special needs, and a growing number of English-language learners?
I think that through strategic planning, all of these needs can be planned for and also addressed. We don't start planning for the following school year in August. We start planning for the school year the August before the following school year. Through budgeting and thinking about statistically, how many new students could I possibly get? We don't wait until we get an influx of students with IEPs or English-language learners to say, oh, maybe we need to have a program. We have to look ahead, and I think that sometimes we don't allocate resources to do that. I also think we should look at the resources we have and maybe offer our staff members that we have opportunities to get dual certified, so that way we have those people already ready with that certification. We already have dual-certified teachers. So I definitely think that it's important to look ahead and plan ahead.
Just leave it at that. Thank you.
Hi, Jen.
Yes.
Lauren. I think in the district, one of the number-one things in the areas of IEPs and 504 is stabilization of that area. I know for myself, my daughter has an IEP, and I've dealt with this Department of Special Services for seven years, and I've dealt with three different directors in seven years. So to me, my first priority is that we have a stable program. With the current director, I'd like her to be the last director I deal with or anyone else deals with for a long time, because in that turnover, it creates chaos with some of our most vulnerable students. So to see some sort of steadiness in the program, I think is number one. Number two is to continue to reach out to the parents, and the parents of students with IEPs, as well as ESL learners, they often need, they need some home support as far as parent education, and I've become a big advocate for that. I know for a lot of parents, when your child comes home with an IEP, you start to panic about how they're going to go through school, how they're going to go through life after school, and the more that we can bring in parent education, we can help to support those students. In addition, we do need to expand our ESL program. That, this year, we saw a lot of growth in that area. I know that they are working for it, but that is a place where we definitely need to continue to strengthen and also come up with a stronger strategic plan.
Thank you. Going back to the town council, Steve, you were talking about the transparency and the agenda and bringing, what are other some things that you would do to accomplish, to involve the residents in the decision-making process in our town?
There's a lot to do. I think first and foremost, what you're doing now is a great example of that. Facebook Live, let's put the meetings on Facebook Live. Let's put the meetings on Public Access TV. Let's get that information out there. If people can't make the meetings, they should have access to it. You know, a good idea that we discussed is monthly meetings with the council people, a rotating basis. So every Sunday at 9:00 a.m., one of the council members is at the coffee shop or the bagel place for an hour. We don't have offices, right? Or the library. Come in and talk to us. Talk to the council members. Talk to the mayor, right? Involve the residents in that process, because when residents and citizens are heard, they're motivated to do more, whether that be vote, run themselves, and get involved.
Thank you. Helen.
Thank you. First, the most important thing is residents need to know, when is the council meeting? You all know because you're interested, you're involved, and that's not to say other folks are not interested, but more needs to be done to get people the information about when do the meetings take place. We don't have a town newspaper anymore. Making use of social media to convey information is critical. It is the way we communicate today, and it can't be ignored, and it seems that today we're not making use of it in a way that's effective and helpful for the community. Along with it, as my running mate has said, council meetings should be televised both on social media and cable, so we meet both sections of our community. Young people, young families, we understand social media. Older families, they may not. So it needs to be on cable as well. And then, as Steve has also said, this idea of council members being available outside of the council chamber is critical. Now, they can't discuss actual council business, we understand that, but they should be available to hear what you want to know, to hear what you say. Me, I would call it council coffee. And each week, somebody else is designated to man or woman the position, and it should take place at different locations in town so that it's accessible for everybody in town, not just at, you know, a particular location, and make use of the businesses in town, so that at the same time, we're helping our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. For the Board of Education, Kara, kind of on the same subject. How can the Board of Education improve transparency and communication with the public to involve more residents in the decision-making process? What changes would you like to see the current format and system of communication?
For the past year and before, I'm extremely passionate, this is probably my biggest topic that I bring to meetings and discuss with parents, is transparency. Number one, I think the reality is that the Board of Education and the district needs a Facebook page. It's a simple way to communicate with parents. I constantly say you have to meet them where they're at, and the truth is, parents are on Facebook sometimes more than they check their email. I'm happy that we're getting a new website, and that it's going to come with an app, and that's going to allow you to be able to see things on your phone, because meeting parents where they're at, as simple as it sounds, they have to be able to access the information that you're sending them on a weekly basis on their phone. My biggest pep key, and I say it all the time, is that we get information in attachments. Most parents I know are running out of space on their phone, they're hitting the attachment, and they don't even, aren't able to download it. We need to have a way to deliver information to the parents where it's listed in the email. To constantly, everything is in attachment, just means that people aren't opening our information. The Twitter feeds that have been put forward by the district and the administrators are a step forward, but I think we need to go further than that. In addition, I would be thrilled if our meetings went on Facebook Live. I know as parents, it's really hard to get here and to come to the meetings and to know what's going on, but it's important that they do. I'd also like to see the minutes of the Board of Ed emailed out ahead of time to the entire district, so that they know what's being discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren?
I think in terms of communication, I would start at a basic level in terms of just the way the school communicates. I think putting out a calendar at the beginning of the year, including all of the events for the year, collaborating with the PTO, so all of the events are in one place for the parents to see. As a working parent, it's very hard for me to rearrange my schedule to attend something if I find out three days before that I have to be at school at 10 o'clock in the morning, when I really want to be there, but I have to request the day off. So it's extremely easy to put together a calendar and give it to the parents in advance so they know what's happening in the school. I think also with transparency and communication, I know as a parent, I don't always feel welcome in my child's school, and I don't feel like I'm wanted there. And I think that that has to change in terms of not just communication, but asking for help. And in terms of decision-making, I think that the board members should hold community forums, see what the public wants. As parents, we hear a lot of things just on the soccer field, at the baseball field, the parents talk. And parents have a lot of things to say, but I don't feel like they have, they feel like they have a forum to be heard. And I feel like I can bridge that gap in terms of what parents really feel and what they think, and how we translate that into the school system. I also think that it's important to listen and be open to making changes, and not just say, this is how we've always done it, and we're just going to stick to it. I think there's a lot of people in this town who have a lot of great ideas, and there's a lot of people who are educators, who can bring things to the district and say, hey, we really do this dynamic thing in our district, let's try it here. And a lot of times, it's met with, oh, thanks. So I think being open-minded. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen, for the town council. One of the questions, a poll consented, was about the boulevard, and what are your plans to bring and maintain business to the boulevard?
Well, when I thought about, oh, excuse me, when I thought about that question, for me, I tried to broaden it, so that it was about the boulevard, but it's about Terrace Avenue, it's about some of the side streets where we have businesses, Williams, Franklin, because our business district does stretch a little bit more than just the boulevard. And so maintaining business, of course, is important. We understand the domino effect of how it impacts our property taxes. So one of the first things that I think we should do is, we should provide Wi-Fi on the boulevard, on the side streets, where the business district is. Other towns do it. It enhances the pleasure of shopping in Hasbrook Heights, and that's just as important as who are the store owners, what are the stores. Next, we have to address the parking issue in our town. Now, I've been in town roughly 19 years. The parking issue came up back then when we first moved into town, and nothing ever happened. There was a parking study, there was a traffic study, but we didn't get anything. We didn't even have an open conversation about it, and even, wow, really? Okay, all right, we'll move on. So parking is a huge issue. I also want to initiate a business development officer, somebody who will coordinate with the Chamber of Commerce, so that as soon as a space in town, a commercial space, becomes vacant, there is a dialogue, there's a connection that happens, and the Chamber of Commerce starts to reach out and reach out to other businesses that they know of and say, hey, come to Hasbrook Heights. One thing is to maintain, but we also have to attract business. The other thing that I want to do is create an initiative to, okay, I got it, an initiative to create a more friendly-looking signage for our town. Right now, we have very flush-looking signs. I want something that comes out on an arm that extends into the space. It won't impede anybody's walking through the town, of course. And commission an artist who will come up with a parameter, a design, for what the signage will look like. It'll be attractive, and it's just one more thing to attract people to our business district. Thank you.
It, Hasbrook Heights is very lucky, a lot luckier than other towns in the fact that we do have a dedicated boulevard slash main street. Main Street America is very, very important to the fabric of this country, and bringing more business into Hasbrook Heights will improve everyone's life. When I was a child, we used to have something called the sidewalk sale, right? Businesses would put all their mares on the sidewalk, kids would walk up down the street, adults, everybody would have a great time. It was almost like a festival. I'd like to bring that back, because it got more people out on the boulevard, it got them walking around, and now all the restaurants out there on the boulevard currently, there's a lot of opportunity to hit every single one. I'd like to meet with a community-minded architectural firm. There are a lot of architectural firms that are community-based, that want to bring downtown areas into the century. There's, like Helen said, Wi-Fi, different design structures, how to change their curbage, appeal, there's a lot of ways to do that. So I think we can meet with them, we can discuss it, and figure out how to broaden our scope on the boulevard.
Thank you. Lauren, so it's for you to start with. What will you bring to this board to make our high school competitive with the highest-performing schools in our region, to keep kids in district that may choose more competitive high schools?
So I think today's students graduating or going to high school have a lot of options. They could go to Bergen Tech, they could go to Bergen Academies, they can choose private schools. I did a little bit of research, and I looked at our school performance report, and under highlights from the 1617 report, and I only used that because 1718 wasn't out yet, our district wrote that we have a great school newspaper, and we have great school sports teams, and that we won an award for the school newspaper. And then I went to Ridgewood, and I went to Tana Fly, and I went to Bergen Academies, and I went to all of those districts that, in my head, when I think of great high schools, those are the towns I think of. And they mentioned that they have a success rate of 100% students who graduate, and they said that they have so many AP classes, or they offer an international baccalaureate program for students, and it was all academic-based. And I feel like ours was, while great, not academic-based. And I think to compete with the Ridgewoods and the Tana Flies of Bergen County, we also need to kind of refocus and focus on academics. And I think that doing that, you have to really start with kindergarten and preschool and early literacy. So we're making sure that our students are coming to high school with the skills that they need, and then we're offering them those classes that we can compete with the academies, and we can make Hasbrook Heights High School desirable for students to want to go there, and not that they have to go somewhere else so they can get into Harvard, and they can, you know, they can get into the Ivy League schools. We can do that. We just have to change the way we look at academics and focus on them and make them a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Kara.
I've spent some time looking at this question the past, last year and this year, and to me, the biggest thing right now that high school needs is more time to provide more academics and more electives. I think the greatest thing we could do to make our high school more competitive at this point is to bring back the eighth period. It is very hard to offer more honors courses, more college courses at the high school level, more electives, more work-based learning if you don't have the time to do it. In seven periods, you just don't have the time to do it. So to me, the number-one step would be to go back to an eighth-period schedule. In addition, I think although it has pros and cons, moving the high school to a block schedule, which reflects more the way universities run and gives our kids a chance to take more courses, I think would be valuable. I mean, we did get our school out of CUSAC, which puts our school, you know, that we are now following state standards, but the next step is that we need to raise the ranking of our high school. So that focus has to come from how many, how many courses are we offering? How many honors courses are we offering? How many accredited courses that we get from universities that come in are we offering? And we literally need the time to offer it. So to me, the number-one thing would be to bring back the eighth period, and then you can enlarge the course offerings at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, you want to start with this one? Another big concern of the town is Woodland Park. So one of the questions that came through is, while it is already understood that Woodland Park is the only large wooded area that Hasbrook Heights has, so much more could be done there for our kids in town. What is your vision for the future of this?
Well, Woodland Park is a passionate thing for me. As president of soccer, I met with the town council a few times to address the needs down there, not just for a field, but for everything else. And I don't want to say this, but I will, the Woodland Park Committee that I am on, to address the issues at Woodland Park, has not met once this year. That's another issue for another day, but it's been burning me for a while. A multi-use field is important. I don't need turf. The town doesn't need turf, that'd be great. Better grass. The field is not nice. They put cheap fill underneath with rocks in it, it burns every year. It starts out good, and then it ends up bad. The trails could be improved. I'd like to see more benches, more trees, more bushes, more plantings, with identifiable signage to teach the children that this is a, you know, a fir tree, and it grows here for this reason and that, and it houses these birds. Another big thing down there that I think would be good, thank you, is the community garden. I want our end schools to go down there, to learn how to plant, to learn what grows in ground, and then take that food that they grow themselves and donate to a local food bank. That's what I'd like to see down there.
Thank you. Helen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Woodland Park, I think, is a tremendous resource for our town, and it needs to become more of a center of our community. There's a lot more we can do, there's sports are important, some of Steve, all of Steve's ideas, of course, I agree with, and in addition to that, I think we should add a splash pool area, a lot of towns have it, it's an opportunity for families with young kids to come in, gives you something to do. Your kids are probably not ready to go to camp yet, you need something. And not everybody is ready to go to the town pool, nor does everybody have the resources to do it. So there's that. I would also include that we should have movie nights, not just for the kids, but for the adults, and do that multiple times through the spring, and the summer, and the fall. It doesn't have to just be twice for the summer and that's it. Also, I think we should have concerts in the park, I think we should provide exercise classes, yoga in the park, tai chi in the park, aerobics in the park, it just goes on and on, what we can do there. And all of a sudden, it really does become a meeting place for people. In addition, I've come up with activities that we can have in the wintertime for the park as well. There's really, we should have winter in the park, we could have ice sculptures, God willing, if we have enough snow, we could have snow activities for the kids. And also, we could bring in people to present lectures, speeches. It just goes on and on what we can do. So I want to see the use of the park expanded beyond the sports and the athletics for the kids.
Thank you. Kara, I think this one, start with you for Board of Education. If our district received a million dollars in funding from the state, what would you suggest the funding be focused towards?
My top, I mean, a million dollars does not go as far as you think it does in a school district, but if I had to pick three projects off the top of my head, number one, I would like to see them put together steam labs in the middle school and the elementary schools, and fund maker spaces at the elementary level. I'd like to see lights on Hitchcock Fields. It breaks my heart when my daughters play softball and the game ends because the lights have gone down, you know, unearth, and soccer teams at the high school have to stop at dusk, so I would like to see that field lit. And the last, I mean, to me, really, I would like to, I think it's like a two-hundred-thousand-dollar stipend to bring back the eighth period in the high school. Those are my top picks.
Thank you. Lauren?
As Kara said, a million dollars really does not go very far. What I think would be important would focus on early literacy, buy guided reading libraries for all of the teachers in the elementary schools. I think it's extremely difficult to implement a guided reading program when you don't have guided reading books. You cannot give basal readers and say, "Let's do a guided reading program," it just doesn't work. I think it's important to have reading specialists. I think literacy is really an important focus in schools, and I don't want to say starting in the high school is too late, but I think if we start down at the elementary schools with preschool and kindergarten and first grade, we're raising a generation of readers who will have the comprehension and the right abilities to go on to do great things when they get to high school. They'll be ready to take those AP classes. We can turn around and say we have seventy percent of our students taking AP classes, because we've really focused on that. If there was any money left over, which there probably wouldn't be, I would, again, like to look into steam labs, and also gifted and talented beyond the criteria that we have set right now. I don't think you're gifted and talented if you get a five on the park. I think many students have a lot of different talents, and students who you might not even think are gifted are gifted in different ways, and I think we need to give them the opportunity to think creatively and critically in their classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Helene, this one's for the town council. If you received a million dollar grant to use for the town, any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
I'd go to Disney. So, million dollars. What I would try to do is, I would create infrastructure with that money, so that we can use that to reduce the expenses of running the town. And specifically, what I'm talking about is installing solar panels on the borough buildings, and also creating a structure above the parking lot across from the Borough Hall, where solar panels are installed, and utilize that energy for our town. T-NET does it, Little Ferry does it, Tana Fly does it, those are just a couple of towns that do it. It makes sense, and it's all part of what can we do to reduce the cost of operating this town, and so that money can go into real services for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
With a million dollars, I would like to begin the process of looking into, there's an area of property in Hasbrook Heights, down Williams Avenue, on the other side of Route Seventeen, there's an Exxon station. Everybody know who I'm talking about? Right? Sitting there for empty for years. I would like to talk to New Jersey Department of Transportation about seeing the feasibility of turning that into a park-and-ride. A lot of people want to go to that train station, but they can't. They can't get there. We have a lot of people in this town who go to New York City for work, and they're hindered by taking the train. Park-and-ride, a little bridge over that, into that train station, it would help if the residents here go to work, and it would attract younger families who want to work in Manhattan but live in this great community.
Thank you. Lauren? So you guys talked about what you'd do with the million dollars, but what do you think are two strengths of which our district can be proud of, and why do you see these as strengths, and what are the two needs that must be priority for our district to address? And why are these needs?
I'll start with the needs first. I think that we do need to participate in strategic planning, we need a clear focus, where are we going and why are we going there? And I'm not really sure that we have a strategic plan, I've looked for it, I couldn't find it, I think that's extremely important. As I've said before, I think that we need to increase academic rigor. I think we need to challenge our students, we need to set the bar higher, we need to embrace what a 21st-century classroom looks like, including steam, and using technology in the right way. Because if I have a smartboard, and all I'm using it for is to write on it like I would a blackboard, then I really don't need a smartboard, because I can use chalk and, you know, what I used to have. One of the strengths that I have is I do think we are a community of committed parents. I think that we have a lot of parents, the majority of parents in this district, who want better for their children. And I think additionally, I think we have great teachers who have given the opportunity and the resources, because I don't believe the teachers are given the tools and materials that they need to succeed. I think we can really do great things. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
I would say the greatest strength of our community is what I just called passion and pride. I've never, I don't know that there's anybody in this room who wouldn't say that this community is full of passion and pride, and I've met with administrators, teachers, parents, that seems to be, that is one thing we all have in common. We're passionate about the schools in this town, and we have a lot of pride in our children and the schools, and we want the best from them. And so I think that's our greatest strength. And because we're a small district, you know, I know we always talk about the things we don't have because we're a small district, we have the ability, though, to serve students on an individual basis. There's nobody coming through this building who's like a nameless, faceless number. I mean, I know when we're out, sometimes parents are like, "Who, have you ever seen that kid before?" And that's like a rarity. Like, do you know who so-and-so is? They must have just moved here, because we do know who our children are. And we do have the ability, because we know them, to address their needs. I would say our greatest thing we need to work on at this point, to be honest, is, it's not a fun thing to say, but the truth is, to increase testing scores and the ranking of the schools, because at the end of the day, that might not be the most, you know, I know some people say, "Well, testing scores aren't everything," but they are how your school's ranked, they are how people decide if they want to move into your community. So to me, that would be the thing that we need to improve upon. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, this one's for you. Describe an experience where you were able to move a good idea forward, working with other people.
I make a joke about having three kids, and trying to get them up in the morning is a good idea, but I'm not gonna do that. I spent a long time on working with Hasbrook Heights Soccer. One of the things we were faced with a few years ago is bringing a U-ten tournament to Hasbrook Heights, Southern Bergen Cyber League, everybody hosted it, no one wanted to do it. I brought that tournament to this town, I and the board at the time. We need to coordinate with other towns, we need to coordinate with our own board, we coordinated with local businesses, local law enforcement, the businesses we had here providing food for the players and the participants and the parents. We had to work with the league itself to get all the teams here. Working on that with so many different moving parts, and putting it all together in a short amount of time, you know, tested us, tested me, but it turned out to be a great weekend, so that's one example.
Thank you. Helene?
So I volunteer for the Women's Rights Information Center, I've done that for twenty-five years, and at the center, along with the co-chair, I handle, I maintain, I make sure that every month there are attorneys at the center who volunteer their time and give free legal advice to women who come in with questions about themselves, about domestic violence, about their families. So over the years, there have been, I'll go back up, there's a connection between that organization and women lawyers in Bergen, so that bar association provides the attorneys. So over the years, I have convinced the board that we need more attorneys, that we need to do more for this organization, we need to do more for the community, and so, specifically with the program, so we are provided, again, free legal services in the form of a consultation. And people are coming in, they want to know, is this domestic violence? What do I do? How do I get out of it? Is there some legal remedy for me? And it has been very rewarding to be able to sit with the women, give them advice, help them come up with a plan, and sometimes work with them to execute that plan, to improve their lives, to improve the lives of their children and their families, and get to see them become independent, self-sufficient people, and it's a tremendous reward. Thanks.
We have time for one more question for each group, and then we'll go to the closing statements. Kara, this one's for you. If elected, what would you hope would be key accomplishments of the board during your years of service?
For me, my number-one thing is to improve communication between the community and the board. I would hope that after three years that we'd see a big move towards opening our meetings up more, and putting things out there on social media and other vehicles. I think it's key to the success of the schools that parents are aware of what's happening on the school board. The second thing is I'd like to see a long-term strategic plan about space. We all know, we need a long-term strategic plan in the district, but space is critical. And the third, I would like to see the improve of the ranking of the high school. I think that there are steps we can take in place to move our high school up, and our school district is judged by the performance of the high school, whether that's fair or not, it's just the fact. So those are the three things that I think are key, and I think they are truly attainable with the right planning and the right direction. Thank you.
Lauren?
If elected, I think it's important to improve policy and regulation to affect academic rigor. I would like to look at the grading policy, I think there are a lot of statistical issues with it. I would like to implement programs that we purchase with fidelity. I would like to encourage community members to start an educational foundation, which could give directly back to the school districts, to provide the district with many things that maybe the school budget doesn't allow for. I've seen it done, and it really is an amazing way to implement art programs and theater programs and after-school programs. I also think I would like to focus on making our schools 21st-century-ready schools and developing 21st-century learners. I want the district to take a common sense approach. Yes, we have to follow New Jersey Administrative Code, and yes, there are certain policies and regulations we have to follow, but I think that sometimes we lose the common sense in all of it, because we're so focused on, this is what it says, and we have to focus on this. I think that we have to say, what is in the best interest of children, and affect the policies and the regulations in that way. And finally, I really want to make classwork and homework meaningful. I think it's important, especially in this day and age, to provide children with meaningful work. You don't need to do forty-seven math problems to show that you can add, you can do it in five. And for me, that's a really big push, and I think I would like to change everybody's mind about what's meaningful in education. Thank you.
Thank you. Last question for the town council. Helene, what three issues would you like the town council to focus upon in the coming term, and why?
Well, the first one is, I want to know what happened with our police contract? Why is it still not completed? Why is it that it was introduced at a council meeting and our own chief of police had not seen it before that meeting? Why is it that this is going on without any regard or mention of the financial impact to our community? There will be retroactive pay changes, that will occur, because there are changes to the contract, it's just logical. So now, all of a sudden, now our town is going to be faced with the burden of large payments that could have been spread out over time, they could have been planned for, our budget will be impacted by this, but yet, this is an ongoing problem. So that's the first, I want to know why, and I want to make sure it doesn't happen again. The next thing is that I want there to be more of a relationship, and a real partnership between the council and the Board of Education. The two bodies really do work hand-in-hand with each other, and with this last issue that came up with a million dollars being given to the town, and some of the money was taken over by the council, I think that's, it shows that we need to have that relationship, and it can only benefit everybody. Lastly, there needs to be more of a partnership created between our businesses and our government, and I don't mean just the Boulevard businesses, but all the businesses in town. We have businesses on Terrace, we have businesses on Route Seventeen, on the side streets. Again, it will benefit our community, we can do more to improve services if we have those partnerships created.
Thank you. Steve?
I will echo Helene's statements one-hundred percent about the police contract. The fact that it's been almost a year is crazy. That needs to be resolved for financial issues, and not just that, but the well-being of our officers, they put their lives on the line every single day for us, we got to get them taken care of, they have to be taken care of. Secondly, the recreation center, I think it could be something we could focus on, there's a room in the basement that is maintained by Hasbrook Heights Recreation, that could be used for the young people of our community, we can do a lot more events down there, I'd like to focus on how we can make that happen, like earlier, pedestrian safety. Two new signs out in front of the high school, you push a button, you know, the lights blink. We need two of those on Terrace Avenue. Two, one on Washington, every single kid in this town walks down Washington to go to practice, to go to the swim club, to go there and you let down there, and that, there is no lights. There's a light on Williams, and then all the way down Franklin. Put one there, and then another one on Henry. Henry is crazy, people trying to walk up and down Uklan School, that crossing guard does a great job, it's very scary, so pedestrian safety is another thing that we really, really have to focus on.
Thank you. Okay, so now we each kind of have two minutes for a closing statement. We started with the board, so maybe we'll start the closing statements with Helene and work it this way. I have a closing statement that one of the board members sent in to me, the board candidate sent in to me to read from Connie Donahue, so I'll read that at the end.
Thank you so much for coming out tonight and participating, and as many of you sent in questions in advance of tonight's program, and thank you, thank you for participating in this process. I love Hasbrook Heights. I didn't grow up in a community like this, and when I moved in with my family and I got to know the town, I got to know the people, I knew this is what I wanted for my daughter. And I'm grateful for what the town has given to me, I want to give that back, truly I do. And I want us to do things so that there's a renewed sense of pride in Hasbrook Heights. I want us to feel that we have the best town, that it is the best school district that we can provide our children, that it is the best police department we can provide our citizens, so everyone feels safe, and it's through communication with a consensus between us, the residents, and the council, that we can create that. that we can create that type of community that Hasbrook Heights can be. Myself and Steve, we are both very committed to Hasbrook Heights. We are here, and I will tell you, whether I win or lose, I will remain in the process. And also, I tell you that I will always be available to talk with you, to listen. Doesn't matter what time, doesn't matter what day. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank the Junior Women's Club for hosting the event. Events like this are very, very important. They're very important for the community and the candidates. I'd like to thank my wife, my children, Ella, Tessa, and Hannah for their dedication to this because it's not easy on them. And I also like to thank Ms. Weiss, Mrs. Murray, Mrs. Terriola for running and trying to make a difference in this community. We need more women to represent us on a local, and a state, and a federal level. So I applaud you all very much. Thank you. To be, you know, to be an effective, responsible leader, the first thing someone must do is show up. You guys are showing up. Well done. Then you listen to the people. You involve the people. That's how passionate and responsible leadership is born. I will do that. I will listen. I will ask tough questions. I will work hard every day to make a difference and represent the people of Hasbrook Heights the best I can. Like Helene said, come on down. Come on down to our new headquarters on 183 Boulevard. We'll be there tomorrow night. Come talk to us. Have a cup of coffee. We're going to check our Facebook page. We're going to have a schedule up. Someone should be there almost every night from now until election. So please, come on down, have a cup of coffee, have a donut. Tell us what you want. Tell us what you need, and we'll get it done for you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Cara?
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's great to see parents here, and thank you guys for coming. Thank you to the Junior Women's Club, who I love so much. And thank you, Lauren, for coming tonight. And I hope, it's great to have people running for the Board of Ed. I hope next year there are six parents sitting up here who are willing to give their time to our schools. Being on the Board of Ed for a year, you learn a lot. You know, you go in with one notion of how you think things are going to run, and you learn a lot while you're on it. But I've also learned there's a lot of ways we can affect change. Myself and Jill have spent the year working on grants. I meet with the grant writer every other week at this point to set up different opportunities for the district. We're working with parents. We're in the process of setting up an educational association. We actually have the bylaws written, and we're second phase of legal. And then hopefully by the spring, we'll be rolling that out to fill in the educational gaps as Lauren talked about. I continue to listen to everybody. Everybody knows you can email me, Facebook me, text me. I take your calls. And I'm willing to bring that back to the Board of Ed. I think I bring an independent voice to it. I'm not easily swayed in any direction. And I'm very comfortable being open to all points of view. That's one of the most valuable things on the Board of Ed. You know, it's not really about whatever your pet project is or personalities. You really have to at all times be willing to look at the best interest of the district and move the ball forward. And in a bureaucracy, which a school district is, it doesn't always happen as fast as somebody who's impatient as I am wants, but it moves forward. So I thank you. I hope that you vote for me and give me an opportunity to continue to serve. And if there's anything I can help you with, or you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. Thanks.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you again. I would like to thank the Junior Women's Club as well for hosting tonight. I also want to thank fellow candidates for also coming. I would ask the public that you remember who came tonight, and that you remember when you go to vote, that we rearranged our schedules too. We're busy too, and we all made it a point to be here to answer your questions. I'm asking you to vote for me for the Board of Education because I'm an educator. And I think who better to sit on the Board of Education is someone who knows educational policy and practice. Not only that, I think that I'm a parent too, and I'm a mom, just like many of you. And if you vote for me, I would be your voice. I would be coming to the table with your concerns and your questions. I'm not just coming as a school administrator, but I'm coming as a parent, and I think that that's really important. I want to reiterate that I do believe in public education, and I do believe in Hasbrook Heights Public Schools. And I want it to be a school district that I am proud to send my children to. And that I'm confident that when my children get to high school, that I know that they can get into an Ivy League school, and that I don't have to send them to a private school to get what I believe we can create here. So once again, thank you. Please vote for me, Lauren Terran, an educator for the Board of Education. And I do hope that you cast your vote for the people who showed up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So Connie Doherty is also running for the Board of Education, and she could not make it here. So she sent in a closing statement for us to read on her behalf. I would like to offer my sincere apologies for not being able to attend tonight's event, but I am away for the week. I'm asking for your support in the upcoming election to continue in my role as a Board of Education trustee for another three years as I feel I still have more to offer the residents of Hasbrook Heights. In the last three years as a trustee, I have seen my longstanding wish for a computer science teacher at the high school fulfilled. As part of the two-person negotiating team, we successfully negotiated the teacher and administrator contracts before the expiration of the contract, something which, as far as I know, has not happened in a long time. I was involved in the committee to institute the Chromebook One-to-One Initiative, which, as you know, has certainly taken off beyond expectations. The relocation of the offices at the elementary schools, the replacement of the clocks, the SAT prep classes, and the increase in security by way of a better camera system and Class III officers are just a few of the many important matters that I advocated for. As a lifelong resident of Hasbrook Heights, I realize the importance of having an excellent school system and will continue to work with the superintendent to approve upon the educational pursuits within the classroom, the communication between parents and the schools, and equitable education to our increasing diverse student population, and the budgetary restrictions that we encounter during the year, sometimes placed on us by legislative mandates. I would like to thank the Junior Women's Club for this opportunity for the residents to get to know more about the candidates running in the November 6 election. If elected, I will continue to attend the New Jersey School Board events that offer training and updates to board members, and as I always have, continue to research issues that pertain to our district. Thank you for your time, Connie Doherty. So that concludes our program. I want to thank everyone for attending and everyone that had come out tonight. And please remember to vote. Thank you.